It is 5:30. If I could call the regular meeting of the Amherst exemptability order education order for February 27th, if you could please stand and pledge the flags that will appear on the monitor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Constitution of which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please call the roll.
Mr. Engel.
Present.
Mr. Zappa.
Here.
Mrs. Gillis.
Here.
Dr. Messer.
Present.
Mrs. Wachholz.
Present.
Item four on the agenda this evening would be a recommendation to adopt the agenda as it is presented, including any addendum. The last addendum appeared about 3:30 this afternoon, but it is on the update that you have and is on the printed copy that you have. So I take your recommendation, please. Motion in a second. Is there any discussion or comments? Hearing or seeing none, please call the roll.
Mrs. Gillis.
Aye.
Mrs. Wachholz.
Aye.
Dr. Messer.
Aye.
Mr. Zappa.
Aye.
Mr. Engel.
Item five this evening would be good news reports. Mr. Tellier, I think you're on here first. Are you going first?
All right. Absolutely. I thought I was going to have to go after all the adorable kids there, but I most certainly will jump in line. Well, thank you, Board, for allowing me to share. There's always something going on at the high school. And we have, today I want to highlight two things that took place and are taking place at our high school. We have amazing faculty, all-star faculty members here. The first one I want to highlight, you probably have heard of Comet Academy. And when you think of Comet Academy, think of that student who we all know, sometimes a traditional classroom doesn't work for everybody. Sometimes there's some anxiety, sometimes there's some credit recovery, sometimes there's just some things going on where kids just need, some of our students need a new start. And I'm going to turn it over to Holly Miller, who's an intervention specialist for us. And she does a great job and really embraces what these students in Comet Academy need. So I'm going to turn it over to Holly Miller.
All right. Hello, everyone. I just wanted to talk about Comet Academy. I am the person that's running it this year, so I work with all of our students. Some of them are online, some of them are at home, some of them are here.
Oh, before you go anywhere.
Yes.
Could you just tell everyone what Comet Academy is? Or is that on the?
It's out here, yep.
Okay, just wanted to make sure it's been said in large fashion.
Yep, we're going to get to it.
Great, thanks.
All right, so it kind of started for credit recovery. So your students who are seniors that like can't quite graduate with their class because they're short on credits, that's what it originally started as. It can be provided in different formats. Some kids are fully online, so they have no contact with a teacher other than their online teacher through the program. Some of my kids are at home, but I meet with them via Zoom during the day. And then we have a group of kids that are just here all day. Some of them are in my room all day. And then some of them are in some gen ed classes within the building and they might have one period a day with me. We typically use like B and C, like the two last ones. We don't do a lot of kids that are fully online because it's found that they really need the support for everything. Okay, so who are our students? We have a lot of different students. Some are homebound due to illness. It could be a physical illness, you know, immunocompromised, they could have some mental health issues. Some of them are at risk of not credit-invoiting due to credit deficits. Some of them may have been expelled or suspended from school and they're no longer allowed on school grounds, so we work with them that way. Some kids just aren't able to thrive in a traditional school environment, so we help those students as well. We work with students that are on IEPs, which are special ed programs, Bible fours, as well as just some students who are just general ed students within the building. Comet Academy, although it was started for remediation and to get kids to graduate, we found that actually some kids are now graduating early because they're getting so far ahead of their peers. I actually had one student who was a senior and she managed to graduate in November this past year because she just busted her butt and got it done really quick. And this was a student who had some severe mental and medical issues throughout her high school career, so it was really cool to see her graduate early. Okay, why our program works? We can group kids into small classes that allows for more support from a teacher. Our kids can work at their own pace. When there's a supervised teacher around, kids are more, you know, apt to use technology appropriately and not like go Google the answers and try to find things like that. An intervention specialist myself, I can also provide some support through Zoom. So a lot of kids, I have a student right now who's expelled and I meet with him periodically on Zoom throughout the day to get some of his coursework done. The big part of Comet Academy, like Joe said, is the relationship part of it. Like these kids, they need a person and they're a people, they need their tribe, and we're able to provide that for them. Research shows that when students have that person and they're in a program like ours, that they're more apt to do better and actually graduate. I'm going to skip through some of this because it's a long thing. So the big thing is like our students' math is usually the huge thing. So they fail a math class one or two times, then they have to take it online. Well, they failed the first two times, like they need someone to help them get through the online class. So my kids aren't just sitting there like online, like I'm teaching lessons and working with them the whole time. We're also trying to work with them to meet their graduation requirements. That might be end-of-course exams. We have things called graduation seals that our seniors have to get. So I work with the guidance counselor and making sure that our students have all those to graduate. One thing we're looking into starting, we've kind of started already, is a work-based learning experience. I have a couple seniors who were only in school for like two or three classes a day and they had a lot of study calls and just kind of like downtime. And one thing you'd realize, like these kids aren't the kids you want to have downtime because that's when they start having problems. So we were able to work out where they could take their last few classes online and they have full-time jobs now. And so we periodically check in at their work site and make sure that everything's being documented. But you know, the kids, they now have a full-time job that will lead into something after they graduate and they don't have to go work at, you know, fast food or Meyer or something. They can actually have a full-time job with benefits. So we're looking to do that more. Like right now, we have two kids doing it. We're looking to try to get more kids into that. The good thing about that too is it also works on soft skills. So soft skills are things like communication, enthusiasm, attitude, teamwork, networking, problem-solving. A lot of the kids that are in my program, that's what they struggle with, like they've been in trouble before. And like those things need to be taught to kids. So I work with those things and help teach them. Okay, the history of Comet Academy. So technically, 2018, 19 was the first like unofficial year. We had a couple kids that were just taking some online classes, mostly due to medical reasons. And then 1920 was like the first official year we had. It was actually called the Amherst Online Academy at the time. The cool thing about this, and Ashley Harrigan told me this, is that year, there was a couple kids from the previous year who hadn't graduated and they were short like maybe one or two credits. So we let them finish those classes online and they were able to earn their diploma rather than having to go through the GED process. So that was really cool. And then 2021 was the first year where there was an actual dedicated teacher in the building working with kids. And if you look at the year, that was like our COVID year. So two out of three in the trimesters, we had a teacher working with students to help them get their credits done. And then last year was when Amherst Online Academy turned into Comet Academy. It was the first year there was a dedicated part-time teacher working with students. Last year, we had approximately 43 students throughout the whole district enrolled in at least one course. Primarily, our students are at the high school. We do have some at NORD and AJH for a variety of like medical reasons and stuff. I just work with the high school students. There's other teachers and administrators that work with the kids in the other buildings. Okay, so this year, we have 36 students at STEEL that are enrolled in at least one Comet Academy class. So according to our statistics, there's 41 in the district total. 18 of those kids are online only, so they do not come into the building. 22 of those are in-person, and then I had to count the one senior who already graduated early. So far this year, as of today, I just checked, my students have completed 118 half-credit classes. So to give you a little perspective, like a math class or an English class is a full credit. So I'll have like an A and B section of the class, electives are half-credits. So 118, that's a pretty good number. Those would be kids that probably wouldn't be graduating on time if they didn't have those credits. The future, what we like to do is just continue to build our work-based learning program, target our non-traditional students that are struggling in school and get them in our program so they have a shot at graduating and learning some skills. We like to provide more assistance to our homebound students through virtual classrooms, like I Zoom with my students sometimes. Sometimes I'll have a couple kids that are taking the same class and I'll set up a Zoom session and meet with all of them at the same time. Also hoping our students find competitive employment. And then just working to create better adaptive behavior and executive functioning skills. And just here's some pictures. So the one on the left is, we have a therapy dog that comes into the school. So that's some of my students with a therapy dog. And then my classroom is on the right. The lights are always really low. I have like sofas and comfortable seating and stuff, so it's more like a lounge-type environment. It's more peaceful than the bright lights and everything. And then the last slide are some of the students I had that graduated last year. And those, all those boys up there, they wouldn't have their diploma right now if we didn't have this program. So it's a good thing for a lot of kids. And I appreciate the district allowing me to be the person that runs this program. It's been a really good year and I love what I do. So I'm going to get teary-eyed doing this stuff, but it's my passion and I love it. And then that was prom, or winter formal this year, the kids like, you have to come and take a picture, so I did. And that's another one of my students from last year. And that's it. Thank you.
Any questions or anything?
Nope, good.
All right. So my second faculty member that I'm going to give a shout out to is Joyce Casnet. She's a Spanish teacher with us. For those of you who maybe don't know Joyce, anytime you go into her classroom, you're going to see Project Base learning kids up and moving around. I can speak as a principal, I can also speak as a father. My daughter has her for Spanish III. A lot of times at dinner, it's like, what did you do? You know, how was your day today? And a lot of times, it's like, wow, we simulated a Spanish-speaking marketplace and things like that. She's always doing interactive, awesome things in her classroom. So earlier this school year, she came to Mr. Molnar and I, and she said, I have an awesome opportunity. They want me, they being Ohio State medical students, would like me to go to Honduras with them and act as an interpreter and to be able to explain and help some of the American medical students to the cultures and that of Honduras and how impactful that would be and I could bring that back to my classroom. And I'm not going to steal any more thunder of hers. I'm going to turn it over to her because she had a great experience and we're fortunate to have her with us all season.
Hi, everyone. I'm Joyce Casnet. Will I ruin the camera if I go stand up in there?
Oh, no, you're good. I'll adjust, yeah.
So yes, just what Joe had said, a great introduction. Learned a lot and had many experiences that I won't be able to share with you today because it was just a lot going on in one week. But I will tell you that who was on the mission. You can see from the United States, we had a lot of people traveling with us. The medical students themselves, that was like double of what they usually take over to Honduras. They do this twice a year so that in Honduras, they have the actual medical care that they need two times a year. So they can go and if they have any kind of underlying conditions, chronic conditions, that they can continually get the care, which is one thing that they really was, they were really pushing for in Ohio State because they wanted this not to just be a one-time deal. So it's pretty cool, this has been going on since 2007, that they've been taking medical students over there. And from Honduras, there's a doctor there that lets them store all of their medicines all year there. So when they come back in six months, all the meds that haven't expired, they give them away if they will expire between the two trips. They're at his house and they're contained and they're safe. And the first stop, we go and pick up all the medical supplies from that doctor's house. So it's pretty nice that they have this collaboration with those over in Honduras. So that's the whole big group of us. And it's amazing to me that we got a picture without any trash because this was probably the place that had the most trash everywhere. So it always just amazes me. I'm like, where's the trash? The garbage was just all over in this area because they don't have garbage pickup. And so they really do just, you know, let it go. And so it's a pretty nice picture. So here's where we were. We were in the city of El Progreso. Actually, we were on the outskirts. We stayed in the city, but we would travel about 40 minutes to three different neighborhoods. They call their neighborhoods colonias. And we spent only one day in the first one because it was smaller and then two days in the next two neighborhoods. This was our typical day. We'd get up and have breakfast at 6:50. We'd leave the hotel at 7:30 in the morning. And then we had to set up and break down clinic every day because they weren't good areas. You had to worry about things being stolen if we left them there. While we were there, we felt very safe. They want us to keep coming back, so they made sure that we were safe while we were there. So it was a simple, you could see the plastic chairs, the tables that came apart, we set them up. And then we were there till about, it said till about 5:30, but actually we were done about 4:30 every day. Then we'd go back to the hotel, have a little bit of time to rest, and then after dinner, we had to start getting ready for the next day and we were counting pills. Never knew I would be counting pills, but I learned how to count pills and help with the pharmacy, getting everything ready for clinic the next day. There were different areas of clinic. So the very first step was, we'll call it intake A. And in this intake A is where they did dental screening so they could say, okay, this person needs a tooth extracted, this person just needs their teeth cleaned. And so we had that right away so we knew where to put them. And then after that, they would take the temperature, their date of birth, they'd get all their personal information. And this is where I ended up finding the area that I really thrived in. So I stayed working in intake A with helping, we had translators from the country and they were actual medical students from Honduras that were helping to translate. But then there were also high school students who were earning extra credit. And so if they came to translate, it was really hard for them to get an adult to open their mouth and take their dentures out because the adult would say, no, I'm not doing it. And then they would say culturally, okay, an adult told me no, I can't fight them on that. That's where I came in. So I'd be like, oh, no, we just want to check for cancer and, oh, okay. And then they'd take it out. But the medical student and/or high school student could not talk back to the adult and that was a cultural thing. And so at first, the dentist that I was working with, they're like, okay, they're young. And I was like, no, 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 that's not what's happening here. So it was kind of good that I was there to understand that part of the culture. Then from that first intake, they would go, and this is where the medical students really got a lot of practice, where they would get their blood pressure, they would take their blood sugar, their height, their weight, and any other vitals. And then from there, they would send them to acute care if they would tell them that, you know, they had a pain here, they didn't know what it was. And then other medical students were at acute care and they got to try and figure out what was wrong with them. So they got to make their diagnosis. And this, I am translating there in the blue for a resident doctor. He came to me and he said, can you translate for me? And I wasn't busy with intake, so I said, sure. You could see, I'm just sitting there because he's speaking in Spanish. And I said, hey, you didn't need me. He said, oh, I needed you for moral support. So it was kind of nice that it was the first time, like after he had learned Spanish in his schooling, but had never actually used it out in another country, for him to be able to do it. But these are all the things that the medical students identified and they did have to confer with either a resident doctor or a doctor that was on-site there to make sure that was the right diagnosis. So the medical students really got a lot of experience doing this. And then there was a chronic care station too where they could go. And this is all in their school. These are schools that you're seeing pictures of because the children were still out of school for Christmas break. So these are very simple, just, they didn't have any hallways. It was just walk into a building and that was your school room. Or you'd get out and go into the next room and that was your school. And then the one place had kind of like a pavilion and a stage there. So it was very simple and outhouses outside. And then the dentist, you could see they're in desks and they're getting their teeth pulled right then and there in the desk. And then if they needed painkillers, if they needed their blood pressure pills, if they needed any kind of creams, we had a pharmacist student there and we set up a pharmacy and they would be able to, and this is where we had to count the pills because we would count them into bags of 90. And then so they would give them enough bags for the six months until they returned again. So thanks to all of you, the community of Amherst, I felt like I was an ambassador. I did take clothing because the students had to take medical supplies so they would have enough. And they had to check in a bag. And I was like, what am I going to check in? I want to help. And so talking with Mr. Molnar, we decided that, hey, why don't we collect items for the children in Honduras? And so that whole campaign of pack my suitcase started and we did. We packed a suitcase. And so they weren't sure how this was going to work and I said, don't worry, I got this, you know? And so I found a plastic bag. I didn't have a table because they only had so many tables that they needed for their mission. And found an area, every place we went, and put the clothing down and had families after they came through intake because I didn't want them just swarming. I'd let them know if they had children, hey, there's new clothes there so they could have it. This was a very rural area. These were pictures I took as we came away from the city to the areas that we were going to, just so you can get an idea of the poverty that we were going into. This is someone's house. She let us come through. One of the security guards did this last May with my daughter and she, my daughter was there on this trip and said, Jorge, can you show my mom where we got the coconuts? So this lady let us come and she came to clinic, so she knew who we were, but she let us come through her house. So how I explained it to my students is this was like primitive camping, but they lived this way. And we went back to the back of her house, maybe what you would call a backyard, and the coconuts were there, but then this beautiful scenery was also there. So you look one way and you have the beautiful mountains and you look the other way and this is how they lived. So I made a lot of connections. It's funny, my daughter went to her dentist today and there were the dentist that I worked with and they took a picture, a selfie with my daughter and sent it to me. Today, I was like, oh my gosh, here are the people I was just with. Also connections from Honduras. Mario was one of them who sent me a voice message, a messenger, just asking me how I was, all in Spanish, of course, because he's like, I'm just going to say this in Spanish. And then the two security guards, one of them that took us to get the coconuts, said no pictures, no pictures, no photos, right? And then the last day, he tapped me on the shoulder and he said, I'll take a picture with you. So that's a precious picture. And the other one, that's his daughter, I'll just have one quick story, I have so many. But this is his daughter with me in the bottom. She needed to have four teeth pulled up front. And when I realized that Jesus had children and they were coming through our clinic, that let me know that Jesus probably needed some help. So I said to him, you know what, I have more clothing back at the hotel, please come and take what you need. And he took t-shirt, underwear, and socks for his two kids, just one of each. And then, I don't know if you know this, but El Seis de Diciembre is the Epiphany, so it's holiday. So they took us downtown to see, you know, the holiday. Jesus and Jorge were with us all day. They were with us at clinic that day. They were with us to make sure we were safe at the holiday. And I said, it's a holiday, why aren't you with your family? And he said, don't worry, the three kings brought my children clothing. Yeah, so that was a really neat, neat experience. And this is something I'll just never forget, the animals that came to clinic. There was a chicken who was missing feathers around its head and I'm like, hey, guys, what can we do for this chicken? And then a horse broke loose and you just wandered right through clinic, you know? And then the people would let us just take their children. If they had to be examined behind closed doors, we had a tarp behind a tarp. They trusted us so much that they would just let us take their children. And then, of course, the currency. So that was something so I could show my students. Again, any questions? All right. I want to thank all of you for allowing us to have them. Mr. Molnar, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Board. Thank you, Joyce. Thank you, Holly. That concludes my good news report. Unless anybody asks questions. Thank you for letting us share. We have a choir concert in a little bit, so you see us all heading out. That's where we're headed to the cafeteria. So if you're bored after this, head on your way. Thank you, everybody.
As we know, we do have a hearing of the public, part of the board meeting every month, and that certainly is so that anyone can address the board however they'd like to address us. But we will ask you, probably by the name that you've signed up here, we'll ask you to please stand, state your name, and tell us why you're here. Please don't be redundant if it's the same thing. Please just move on to the next person, just please move on unless you've got something new to share. The board will listen to your comments. We will not make any comments back to you this evening. We will take everything that you say into consideration and let you know any decision that we would make regarding whatever you address this spot. This will only last no more than 30 minutes since there are several of you on here, so we'd like you to not exceed five minutes if possible, please. The first person that has signed up is Dennis.
Yeah, I'm Dennis Muzillo with the Shadow Creek Homeowners Association. And I provided each of you with a file folder with a lot of information that relates to the topic at hand. Back on the 9th of this month, eight of our association members, and there are 25 houses in that association, met with Principal Gibson over at the Amherst Junior High and discussed what we thought was possibly a concern of ours, and that would be installing basketball courts, benches, lights, and a concrete pad behind the school very close to our subdivision. He said that it would be supervised 100% during the day, but it would not be supervised at night, and yet it would be good for the kids to play there. That was a big concern of ours. We thought that any lights out there at night would attract kids that maybe would be playing, others that might not be playing. There might be some sound issues, both with the kids and balls bouncing in the middle of the night if they were still with that long. And then, you know, because it's behind the building and less visible to anybody except for us, we thought that maybe some not-so-legal activities might be occurring there. Not to be too negative, but we just wanted to be realistic about the situation. We did not think necessarily that any cameras that would be installed would necessarily prohibit any of that. At the meeting with the principal, I asked our members who were present whether or not they would object in that spot to put up a new addition to the school. None of us did. A big building, you know, where kids could be educated would be fine, but basketball courts that would be lit at night would not be. Part of the presentation that was given to him, that he gave us there, rather, is a outline of where this proposed court would go in relation to the school itself. So it's all in your folders. We came in with a proposal elsewhere that this court could go. There's a vacant parcel of land on the northeast corner of the same property. It's outside of the fenced area where there's sports facilities now. And we measured it, actually, out there with a wheel measuring. And there's enough size there to install three full basketball courts that are regulation size for a high school. Additional advantages in having a court at that end of the property is that it's better within public view, which we thought would be important. There is a large parking lot there on our side of the building. There is a large parking lot there on our side of the building. That would save the school district based upon the drawing that we saw of what was going in behind the building, the cost of putting in a driveway to get to that facility, the cost of putting in a parking lot, because the parking lot's already there on the north side. And then additionally, the concern about the sound with the safety at night, it would be more visible to anybody like police or whoever because it would be right there out in the open. So, you know, we asked that you, our association asked that you take a look at all of this and your consideration of what you might be doing in this area, and I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Mrs. McGurney?
Some of it Dennis has already gone over, but Mr. Gibson said that this was an ideal for the kids for, for recess, which would have supervision. Our, our problem is, our worries are, what about the times that the kids aren't being supervised? We're talking about after-school hours, we're talking about late evenings, nights, weekends, summer and holidays. And like you said about the basketball, you know, being bounced around the, we are close enough that that would be very, very loud to any of the homes that are, there are four homes that are facing that area. And it's close enough. And it is not a clean, clear vision for the kids. They can do whatever they want there, and if they know that there's nobody there to supervise them, they, kids are kids, they'll try to get away with whatever they can. All right, let's see. Other kids from other areas can also come to that, which could lead to other problems. And when you put kids together with four basketball hoops, there is gonna be some pushing and shoving. Someone's gonna get mad, and the next thing you do, you have a fight. Who's to say that a kid's not gonna have a gun in his pocket? When you're in an unsupervised area, back in the back of the school, not easily visual, so that scares me too for the kids. And who's gonna be responsible if somebody does get hurt? And I guess I also worry about if there is some sort of fighting, is it gonna come back into the neighbor's yards? We're talking it's close enough that that could happen. So there's also, you know, you have to worry about your neighbors there also. They already cut through the backyards to go back there in the evenings sometimes. Is that gonna increase kids cutting through the homes, not just an area where they have been, but I've heard they've been cutting through the backyards also. And my final thing is, we're so close to Powers, and we are so close to the junior high, that if anything ever happened to the school, we would be considered safe home school children to go to. And any one of us would do anything to protect any of those children, and those homes would be open if needed be.
Thank you. Tim Andrew? Tim Andrew?
Yeah. I don't know if you know where Cargus Park is. It is in Amherst Schools. And I lived over there, and Cargus donated the property to the city for to make a park. They put a basketball court in there. Basketball courts no longer there. They had so much trouble, the neighbors over there complaining, they ended up taking it out there. There was fighting going on and everything because it wasn't supervised. I looked at this, where they're putting this, and this is in a corner, this is hidden. Kids could get in trouble and other problems could be created down there.
Thank you. Dale and Maxine?
Well, that, I thought it was a sign of change.
So you don't want to talk? All right. Sam Bradley?
My home adjoins the area that, that Mr. Gibson indicated could possibly be the basketball court. And of interest to me was, one of the reasons that he wanted to have the basketball court in that particular zone of the school property was because basically, he advised us that that there might be some parent that decides that today's the day that I'm gonna take my child and secrete them from the other parent, perhaps they're estranged or divorced. And that makes a lot of sense to me. Let's protect the children from, I guess, bad parents, bad people that decide that they wanna take the law into their own hands. The problem that I have, though, is how many times has the Amherst Junior High and our Powers experienced a parent coming over to try and snatch their child and take them away from school like the other parent? Secondly, how many times has either of those schools experienced a non-related person grabbing a child and taking them away? And he indicated that that would be the best area for the basketball court to prevent such occurrences from happening. I thought about that. In my street, it's called Shadow Creek, I'll give you an example, I'll use my hands. This would be the basketball court, this is the backyard areas, and then we have the street. Now, the street really doesn't lead anywhere other than to what's called Van Oaks, and then, or Caribou, then Van Oaks, which would be a nice escape route. Another escape route would be if their car's parked, say, in front of one of our houses, would be to go towards Kempton Woods, Kempton Woods then out to Lake Street. So there's at least two avenues of escape. Now, currently, there's only really one avenue of escape if they were trying to take a junior high student, and that would be, maybe, what is it, mine avenue. Why? Because you have the gate down during the daytime that separates the Powers School, at least I thought it was down during the daytime. I'm assuming it's down during the daytime. So the Powers School and the junior high, that road or access road is closed off, so you can only get out one way if you're going to the junior high, and only get out one way if you're going to the Powers. Where with our situation, there's multiple ways to get out. Now, a parent may evaluate the area if they're really sincere and say, wait a minute, I could take my kid through the woods and go up to Crown Hill Cemetery and have my car waiting there. No one will know which way I went because they'll be expecting a car to go either one of the routes I mentioned earlier. Now, the nice thing about Crown Hill is if you go down the hill in our neighborhood, if you know the neighborhood, you can access Crown Hill Cemetery through the woods that way. Just takes a little bit of effort, and I think a parent or a person who wants to kidnap a child would say, oh, that's a, that's a tiny bit of effort to accomplish this big goal of protecting my child from that bad ex-spouse I have or of taking this child for other bad purposes. So I think some of these considerations are being made by at least Mr. Gibson, I assume Mr. Molnar, and maybe even the board, but I think a bigger picture should be evaluated before determining that this is the best spot for this basketball court. In light of the consideration that Mr. Gibson indicated, let's protect the children from bad people or bad parents. So, thank you, that's what I have to say today.
Thank you. We thank all of you for your input. I think that if you all stay around, you're going to see a little bit of a presentation because the board has not seen an entire presentation on this problem or this issue that's coming forth. So I think if you stay around a little bit this evening, I think Mr. Molnar has a presentation that will address some of the concerns that we know have come this way. Just, the thing that the board knew that was going on, just so you're all aware before Mr. Molnar speaks, is that we knew that the PTO had raised some money to buy some basketball hoops. I know it means that they raised enough money to do the whole project. So we're taking, we're taking a look at the project to consider where the best place to be and how it will best benefit the Amherst School District and the citizens, because we all know that this public property is the schools. And so if somebody wants to use the playground, they'll use it whenever they want to use it. We cannot control that, okay? So we, we understand that, and we take all of those things into consideration with all of the things that you've said, you know, from that perspective. With that, we're just gonna move on, but I just, you know, a lot of times you all speak and then you get up and leave because you know we're not gonna address anything we'll do this evening. However, there is going to be a presentation this evening about this, I do believe. Correct, Mr. Molnar?
Yes, I have a favor.
All right. Yes, sir?
I live down the hill from you, you and association. I just don't understand the logic of splitting up or destroying facilities from one to the opposite end of the school.
Thank you. Item seven this evening would be the treasurer's report.
So tonight, we're going to talk a little bit about district support organization. Mr. Engel asked me to do a presentation, and Mr. Molnar, if you have anything to add, please, please do. Go ahead, forward.
So tonight, I just wanted to talk a little bit about district support organizations. We do have several policies that govern how we treat parent organizations and other organizations. And what I would just like to say is, basically, I'm going to distill down what the policies say. District support organizations are essentially parent groups. They are parent groups such as PTO, whose objectives are to support the educational experiences of the district, I'm quoting policy. Other district support organizations would be, say, for athletics, band boosters, et cetera. There are two different policies, ninety-two-ten's parent organizations, ninety-two-eleven are the other organizations. And just know that they're nonprofit entities formed and operating solely for the purposes of supporting district programs and perhaps even providing for experiences that the board would not normally provide. Again, we talked about policies, ninety-two-ten, ninety-two-eleven, and seventy-two-thirty. You can advance Sarah, please. Thank you. Note that district support organizations must be approved and acknowledged by the Board of Education. Again, they support the educational initiatives of the district. They are responsible to know and be compliant with district policy. They must provide information annually to support organization leadership, proof of five-oh-one-C-three, which is showing nonprofit status, provide their own liability insurance, et cetera. And just know that we acknowledge the hard work, passion, and continued support, and it is important to mention, though, that district support organizations do not make decisions for the district. Per policy, or our advice code, and the code of federal regulations, which are the overarching things that dictate what our policy says, donations from district support organizations must be made in accordance with policy seventy-two-thirty and any accompanying guidelines. Then donations become the property of the district and used in the manner determined by the board. So if you want, I think seventy-two-thirty is the next one. Go ahead. These are just screenshots of, of the policy. If you care to look it up, you can go to www.amherstk12.org, go to the board page and click on policies, and you can search for anything. I'm sure you all really love how it's done. Anyways, so that was just a quick presentation. Was there anything else that you wanted me to mention?
I think it's just important that everyone, everyone gets a reminder that the parent organizations are really just an organization, and they are not. They don't report to us, but they can give us things, but they're their own entity. So I just wanted everyone to understand that we do have requirements, and there are some that we do not accept because they do not have, they do not meet the criteria of five-oh-one-C-three and they do not hear that. So we take that very serious because we don't want any problems with any of our parent organizations. We want them to be legitimate, and we want to make sure that the money that they raise is being spent on the children, and that's why we'd like them to give us that money. And they make recommendations to what they think they would like to do with that money that they raise. Most likely, we try to accommodate that all the time, sometimes we can't accommodate that, so we go back to them and have a discussion, would it be okay if we did this? Because we can't accomplish what you want to accomplish. So I just think it's important that everyone remembers that, because sometimes they think that Quarterback Club or the Athletic Association and all those people make decisions for everything, and they really do not do that. So I just think it's important that the entire community is aware of that, on the way different things is. Because new people come and new people go, and so everybody has new ideas, okay? Thank you. Any questions on that subject matter? From anyone? Board member? Nope? All right, so now we'll move right ahead. Matt Treasure?
Onto a brief financial recap. The board has a, basically a profit and loss statement convinced by a five-year forecast line, revenues on top, expenditures on the bottom. On the left-hand side are month-to-date figures for fiscal twenty-three and the two years prior, and on the right side of this spreadsheet is year-to-date figures for fiscal twenty-three, twenty-two, and twenty-one. The green fields mean that there are positive variances from the prior year. A positive variance for revenue would mean that we received more revenue year-to-date now or month-to-date now than we did last year in fiscal twenty-two. And a positive variance for expenditures would be that we spent less this year, this month, or this year-to-date than we did last year at this time. So our cash balances at the bottom, and we are currently tracking two million more expenditures than in revenues. There are some reasons for that, and we have talked at prep meetings about public utility revenue did not come in on the last settlement in August. So I'm expecting settlement here in the next couple of weeks to show that we have now collected those delinquencies. And then there are some other things where you see a variance in expenditures doing better or buying less than we did last year at this time. It probably has to do with being able to defer some of the expenditures to the art S group, which is S group three. That's it.
Any questions? Any recommendations this evening, Madam?
So the first item for your approval, item eight-A, are the board minutes from January twenty-third regular meeting, also the board minutes from the special meeting on February ninth. And then item C is the prior month financials for January twenty-twenty-three. The four exhibits there are the exhibits you see each month, which are bank reconciliation, cash reconciliation, a fin sum, financial summary by bond and special cost center. There are month-end forecast reports that compare actuals to budget, and that is for Fund One and Fund Sixteen, which is the emergency levy. And the eight-D then is the monthly checklist day for accounts payable. Item D are changes, I would say, to appropriations for the month of February. They're itemized there. I just want to point out that there is an additional fund in special cost center where we need to increase the appropriation, and that is the oh-eighteenth, commonly called the principal's fund for Powers Elementary, increasing from fourteen thousand to five hundred appropriation to sixteen thousand five hundred. Item E is a then-and-now, as you know, you've seen these before. Any invoice that we receive for which the purchase order is dated after the invoice, if it's three thousand or above, must go to the board for approval. My, my latitude to approve it is exhausted at two thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine. Item F then is a ton of donations that the board must acknowledge, and that is all I have this evening. Does anybody have any questions?
Let's take a motion if we have questions. We have a motion in a second. Now, is there any questions or comments for this evening? Everybody's happy tonight, okay? They're being done, please call the board.
Mr. Zappa?
Aye.
Mrs. Gillis?
Aye.
Dr. Messer?
Aye.
Mrs. Buckholz?
Mister Engel?
Aye.
Item nine this evening would be Victor Molnar's presentation.
Yeah, I have two updates. One is regarding the Age Age Recreation Area, I want to give you an update on. And the second one, I brought some kids tonight, so we're gonna do that in a moment. So kids, thank you for being patient. Parents, thank you so much. You're learning a lot in civics and how they work. When it comes to board meetings, also want to say hi to all of the students out there watching on comments live. We are broadcasting live because there is a decision we want to make. It's very important about next year that our students are involved with in some of the decision-making, so we'll get to that in a moment, so thank you for being patient. But first, I want to give an update on the Age Age Recreation Area. So after Mr. Gibson met with the representatives from the neighborhood, we've been reviewing that information, looking at all of the issues that might go along with placing that recreation area at the back of the building. Lots of pros in that, but there are also some cons which you brought up tonight. In addition to some of those safety concerns and other things we've talked about, one of the things we also talked about, which was not mentioned tonight, was water runoff. We certainly don't want to be in a situation with a lot of cement that we're going to flood your backyard. So while there is drainage and stuff there, that was a concern we had personally on our end after reviewing some of the plans and thinking some more. So what we looked at, had some great work with Mr. Gibson and also Mr. Grimmett, who's our grounds maintenance supervisor. who's our grounds maintenance supervisor. We found an area that's just the same size that, if you look here, if you could tell. Now, this is the soccer field at AJH, and this is the ticket booth that you see when you're coming down the driveway. Right now, currently, there's a fence that goes across straight here from the ticket booth all the way across. And there's a large area of grass that's on this side of the fence that's unusable right now, that ties into the turnaround and some parking. When we looked at that space there, it does make a lot of sense possibly to move the recreation pad and basketball hoops in that area, eliminate the fence, pull the fence out toward the sidewalk, cut it across then through there. Also, we can put then in a double-wide kind of entryway gate where students can come right out of the front of the building, right down here, and walk in there, which will also allow, right now, they're using the turnaround and using the space up there to throw balls around, have some fun. They might be able to use the recessed area with the basketball hoops, and also maybe use the soccer area and some other areas. So that makes kind of more sense about one specific area. Also, because of the fencing, we feel like we can probably safely contain the students when they're in there. And also off hours, even though we have lots of lights there and possibly security cameras, we can always have it locked up because, again, there is basketball hoops right across the way in Powers. So a lot of the issues that we took in consideration, we're looking at this area. Also, right now, we do not have access for handicapped parents, grandparents who are wheelchairs and other issues to get to the actual stands for soccer or softball or baseball. So in addition, what we were thinking, we would then continue on another sidewalk along here and then a wide sidewalk with another service area going directly to the stand so that those with handicap accessible accommodations, we can get them to the stands without having to go through all the grass and so forth. But we feel like this might be, what we want to share with you, might be a great alternative to the original plan. I think it solves a lot of other issues and also kind of keeps some of the concerns from the neighborhood away from that. So I just wanted to give you the update with the board. We'll continue to look into that with, again, lighting, security, drainage issues on our home probably there, how it might work with parking and so forth. But that's just an alternative I wanted to share with the community and also the board. And again, feel free to share your thoughts on that if you'd like. Before I move on to the next part, which the kids have been waiting for.
Any questions on this? Any thoughts?
Thoughts?
It'd be the same size as what's going to be behind the building. Probably around six feet or so.
I think the idea of having a sidewalk on two of those ones.
I guess the question that we would probably ultimately ask is, do we have a price tag for this project?
Oh, we do not yet. So we've worked on that.
So we're still in the stages of developing that. So we need to make sure that the people understand that and that they get that information because they run under the impression that these basketball hoops are going to go up in this project. And I don't foresee that happening this spring because of all of this stuff here. So I just think that we need to make sure that Mr. Gibson communicates that to the organizations and they know and know what he stands for. If the homeowner association would like to fund some of this, we'd be happy to.
It's like, lucky, $5.
At your next meeting, we are going to come up with a donation for this project. That would be greatly appreciated as well because it will take some money that you probably have not put aside for some of this. So we'll have to do some planning and see how much money it's actually going to take to make that happen, so, okay? Any other questions? If not, oh.
I just would like to say thank you for bringing something absolutely huge and also say that over by the junior high, the walking path is absolutely beautiful. I mean, it's well-kept, it's well-used, and people walk in Powers, and it really looks nice over there. So I'm so appreciative that they're not going to do that because I think that would take away from the vibe. But it's very nice over there. I enjoy living over there. More now than today.
More than I did major. It's only to have to living there again.
Molnar in 24.
Okay, any other questions? If not, item two.
Moving on.
All right, so we have a board agenda on the agenda tonight that has to do with a possible decision to make of next year's calendar. So if you're not aware, next April 8, there's a solar eclipse that's the path's going directly to Lorain County. And we actually received some information from emergency management in county that asked us to consider possibly closing school on April 8 next year because if you're not aware, when, I mean, there's a lot of people who are interested in solar eclipses and what happens. And I think a couple of years ago, when I went through Kentucky or whatever, we had a few people go down there and millions of people arrived to watch this. So millions of, a million possibly people will be coming to Lorain County on that day to specifically find a spot and watch the solar eclipse. And so how many fifth grade teachers do we have here today? Would you mind coming up also, please? In a moment. Ms. Henry, Ms. Kendra, Ms. Lyman are here. They did a project with the students to consider this, I think in science class. And would you, would you give like a 30-second kind of snippet of what you did with the whole fifth grade? Go ahead, anyone?
We asked, we asked the students to do a little bit of research on how they felt about whether or not schools should be in session on April 8. And we had, I had a majority of my students write that schools should not be in session on that day. But I had three people, Brooklyn is one of them, and she's here, who wrote good arguments about why we should be in school. So we asked the students to look at different research. The Chronicle Telegram had some articles on this recently. There was the Fox 8 News. And so we showed all of those to the students, and they took all of that information and what we had learned about eclipses and then wrote a few letters.
And so that was the entire fifth grade? And we have some representatives from fifth grade, I think nine or all nine here? Maybe not.
Maybe they're all of them.
Well, if they're ever going to make it, we invite them to come. Also, just so you're aware, I submitted their nine letters to the board in addition to the emergency management letter for the board to consider this evening about this decision. It is, you know, normally when we have a day like this, a calamity day, which is like a natural event or an issue, it's usually a snow day, temperature day, hospia, power outage, et cetera. And so normally, I make those decisions as the superintendent, you know, because that's my job last minute, right? But this is a calamity day that we know way in advance. And so I thought since the board approves the calendar every year, it's their job to create the calendar. It's their job to decide whether it's calamity day or not. So the pressure is off of me for once. So I would like to invite, if you're here, I would invite, like Cameron, Ju, Sophia, Isabella, Lola Crosby, Brooklyn, Violet, and Alexander, come on up. Please come up so everyone can see you. Cameron, do that, let's face the cameras. And then we have two students who I think this group kind of nominated to read their letter specifically to the board so you can hear that. So first, Cameron, would you like to go first? Okay, so if you face the camera, read to the audience.
Why don't you come right up here and stand?
Okay, come on.
Now, everybody, if you turn around and address the camera. We're going to listen because we've already read your letter. So you go ahead and address the problem, okay? A lot of pressure on you. You'll do great.
Dear Mr. Molnar and Schoolwork, On April 8, 2024, there will be a total solar eclipse and we will be, and we will be in the path of totality for the first time in hundreds of years. But how would you feel if there was a really big event that you wanted to go to, but you had something to do like schoolwork? You should have that school that day because it would really be amazing to see this big event that will happen in another 400 years. If we had that day off, we would get to see a once-in-a-lifetime event, be safe from the dangers of an eclipse, and we would get to witness it with our families. Here are some reasons I don't think we should have school that day. Firstly, this is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. The next solar eclipse will be the near, will be near the year 2444. And the last solar eclipse where we were in the path of totality was in 1806. 1806 was 217 years ago, and 2444 will be 421 years from now. We won't see this again unless we travel. Additionally, a danger or concern is that Amherst District students could be trapped on the bus due to eclipse seekers and there being traffic. At least the junior high students get out of school at 2:45. It will be somewhere near 3 o'clock. If you were one of the people that are on the bus for a while, the eclipse might happen when you were still on the bus. So you might get stuck in traffic because people might either stop to see the eclipse or just be arriving to see it. In fact, during the 2017 total solar eclipse that spanned from Oregon to near the Florida region, students that were going from school were trapped on the bus for hours more than they needed to be. Furthermore, we would really want to spend this event with our families. Once again, if we go to school, totality will be when we are on the bus, meaning if our, even if our family got this day off to spend this event with us, it wouldn't matter for most people. And plus, if we do go to school, our families might be worried about us because there could be many dangers when it comes to an eclipse. Others might say that this could be a learning experience if we were at school. Even though this could be true, we are learning astronomy, so there's a big chance that we would already know most things they want us to learn. They could also say that we would need to be in school because of our families working, but I, but I believe they would get the day off because their managers are concerned about the traffic. To somebody else, even though we really just want a day off, we really just want to see this event and not be trapped in school. This is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. Remember, the next solar eclipse in our area isn't until 2444. If we didn't go to school, we would also be safe from dangers. If we did, we could be trapped on a bus for hours. We could crash because of the sudden darkness and lots of other things. But most importantly, we could witness an incredible number of families.
Phenomenal.
24 total. There's a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity coming up. A total solar eclipse will be right over Amherst. We're in the path of totality, and we might not always. The next eclipse will be in 2099, and what if we can't even see that one? We should have the day off to see this. Many people want to see it, and it could also be a safety issue. If someone looks at it without special protection and glasses, they could go blind or damage eyeightightnesses. In my opinion, we should get the day off. There could be very bad traffic. Tourists from all over the world would want to come and see this. Even the president may want to see this as well since it's a very big opportunity. At one point, there will be no more solar eclipses, so we should be able to see the only ones that we may be able to see. The moon slowly drifts away at 1.6 inches every year. We might not even be alive for the next solar eclipse in 2099. Ohio will be overpopulated. NASA is saying that Ohio's population is expecting to triple during the eclipse. There will be loads of people coming, many tour buses might be coming, which will make it hard for school bus drivers to drive. There will be, there will be lots of people that may make it hard for kids to walk home. People may also park in a door parking lot, which may make it hard for car rider pickup and dismissal. When Obama came to Amherst, everything was backed up. What if that happened again? It can make it very hard for bus drivers to take kids home during that. So our closest, they don't have it often, so people want to see them. You might be thinking, you guys will be fine. We will just buy everybody in the school special glasses this year. But you probably don't realize how many people will be coming to Ohio to see this. First of all, the glasses are very expensive and bought by our pets. What if they look at it, it's not just us? They could hurt their eyes as well. If we were at school, we could probably, wouldn't have time to see it. NASA says the eclipse will only last 4 minutes and 58 seconds. Well, maybe not all families can buy the glasses and may accidentally look at it and hurt their eyes. Once again, we need the day off so we can see an interesting thing in our solar system. We should get the day off so we should keep ourselves safe and your pet safe during the eclipse. You might want to see it too. You can't see it if you're sitting in office all day.
So you can see these students did a lot of research, worked very hard on this, and I think they've made some very compelling arguments for this decision, which we will have in a little bit, after a few more discussion points, I think we have. So you're going to have to wait a little bit more to find out the decision, but you've been doing a phenomenal job so far. Parents have been great. I am sure they're going to treat you with ice cream after. Yeah, that's not my fault. I would do it, but. So great job, everyone, thank you for coming. Be patient and sit around, and in probably a few moments, we'll have the decision made by the board. Everyone's going to know, okay? Thank you so much, everyone. Who's my report? This is Walker.
So now you're putting my report between this decision and this vote? Oh, my goodness. Oh, my goodness. Okay, so, well, for my report, I get to talk about one of my favorite things, which is our Little Commits preschool. And I wanted to give the board an update as far as, and as well as the public, as far as what does our preschool program entail? Why do we have a preschool program? As well as how our preschool program has really grown over the past few years. So Little Commits preschool is what's referred to as a preschool special education program, a PSE, and we are licensed by Ohio, the Ohio Department of Education. All PSE and the Ohio Department of Ed licensed preschool programs also have to go through the Ohio Job and Family Services Step Up to Quality Program, which ensures that early childhood programs are being safe. They are providing the top-notch training to their staff, and they are ensuring positive outcomes for our youngest commits. And so we are very blessed that within our program and through the work of our preschool supervisor cordwork and our preschool staff, we are a five-star rated preschool program, which is the highest step-up to quality rating that the state can give. We are an integrated preschool program, which means that we serve our students with special needs alongside typically developing peers. And our peer models are typically four years old and up, and they serve as models to our students with special needs with communication, self-help, daily skills, socialization, to provide a more well-rounded experience for all of our students. Through that program, we also screen all of our peer models. And actually, last year, through our peer model screening, Cory wanted me to make sure I said this, we actually picked up two students for speech services, as requiring speech services. So it's a really excellent opportunity for our community members to get involved in a preschool program so we can make sure that we're serving as many kids as we possibly can. We have partnerships with Lorain County Early Intervention, which many people know is the Help Me Grow program and other local community-based preschools. But that's not all. With our integrated preschool program, we re-provide a continuum of services as well as a variety of related services. We have occupational therapy, physical therapy, speech therapy, audiology services for our students that come to us with some hearing needs. We have behavior consultation, mental health services, you know, really the gamut so that we can make sure we're providing as much as we can for all of our students. In our program, we currently have four integrated classrooms. Integrated classrooms have eight peer models along with eight students with disabilities, and those ratios need to be maintained at all times. We have one general education classroom, which we just added this year. In that general education classroom, we serve students that are not in IUPs as well as some kids that just have some speech needs within that program. And then we have two low-language classrooms for our students with the most intense needs. We also serve, at this moment, 15 itinerant students, and they either come to us for playgroup services during the week or we serve them out, we go to them, a community-based preschool. So it's a very wide range of program offerings that we have. And where do these kids come to us? Well, they come to us through Help Me Grow, which Help Me Grow serves students that are age zero, first born, up until they're three years old. And they provide speech, they provide occupational therapy, they provide support for kids, you know, during those very early intervention formative years. But as they're transitioning, as they're getting close to their third birthday, Help Me Grow reaches out to us and we do an evaluation to see if they qualify for preschool services. So a lot of our evaluations come from Help Me Grow, but they also come from parent referrals. Sometimes parents go to their pediatrician, and the pediatrician says, I think you need to call the district. I think there's something going on that, you know, maybe your child needs some speech services or something. But you'll see here, the evaluations we had from 2019 to 2020 to now have gone up each year. Now, 2020 was cut kind of short because there was this pandemic thing that happened in the middle. I don't know if you're all aware of that or not, but that was the thing. And so some of those evaluations had been pushed to 2020, 21. But by the end of 21, 22, we had conducted 64 evaluations. We are currently at 45, and we're in the middle of the year. So I expect us to meet or exceed that 64. Students that we've been serving over the past several years, this is as of January for the past four years. So in January 2020, we had 50 students with disabilities. We had a total of 85 students, that was students with disabilities and peer models. January 2021, that was our COVID year, so we took less students that year. so we, we took less students that year to keep our numbers lower. Um, and a lot of families opted for home services that year. But last year, at this time, we had eighty-eight. And this year, at this time, we're currently at a hundred and nine. That's total students enrolled in our program. So as a result of that, um, the trend continues to grow. The needs of the, the kids in our community continue to grow. And for the past two years, we had been looking at possible alternate locations for our preschool program. Because in the New Powers Elementary, the preschool area was built based on the numbers we had at the time. Um, there was some room for growth. Like I said, we added that fourth classroom. There are four classrooms in the preschool wing. Um, prior to adding the general education class, we utilized that fourth space for our playgroup. However, each year for the past two years, we had to add a class around this time of the year because our, our numbers were getting so big, and we're getting to that point again. Um, so moving forward, because of the numbers of students increasing, because of the needs of the students increasing, you know, more kids, we're gonna need more related services, um, so we're gonna need more space for those therapy services to happen. We need to start exploring what options might be out there. Um, so we have looked at several area churches, um, we've talked to St. Joe's. You know, uh, we even had one contractor we spoke with who was, said, well, hey, I can build something for you. And, um, you know, in, in an existing, like, kind of office center space, um, but it just wasn't kind of really fitting like what, what we were gonna need. And so actually, um, very recently, you know, Cory, um, Mrs. Rourke had been on maternity leave, and she called me one day real early in the morning because apparently no more babies get up real early in the morning. Um, and she said, so I'm sitting here with, uh, my new little guy, and I'm reading the Amherst News Times, and Mercy Health is moving out of the rec center. And so they have this space available. It's over a hundred thou-, it's about a hundred thousand square feet, just under. Um, you know, maybe we can go take a look at that. And so we've talked with the metro parks who, um, run the rec center. We've, we've looked at the space a couple times, and it could be a feasible space for us to either move to have some classes or potentially move all of our classes, um, into that area. So there could come a point, of course, we're doing our due diligence to look at numbers and look at feasibility, and, um, there might be some retrofitting that would need to come with the space. Um, but I'd like to invite the board, if you'd like to, to look at the space with us. We'd love to show it to you. Um, plenty of room for additional classrooms. I know one of the things that we like to do is look at, um, opening up more general education classrooms so we can even target and hit more of our students. Potentially looking at an early childhood education grant, which would then provide preschool services for our families, similar to the way free and reduced lunch works, um, where either tuition could be waived or reduced, um, for those families. And so it would be a really nice addition to, we already have our all-day, everyday kindergarten program, um, so that all families have access to all-day kindergarten. This would be a nice way for more of our families to access our preschool program. So it could be something that down the road, we're, we're looking to potentially have a special board meeting or, um, you know, bring you in to come look at the space and, and kind of talk about what some of our vision might be for that. Any questions?
Thank you.
Yes.
Mr. Moore, maybe you want to explain, because I, I think that's really interesting when we had our facilities committee meeting. Um, you were explaining, why didn't we make Powers bigger?
Yes.
Why didn't we?
Right, that, that's, that's a great, great point. So at the time, when we, when we created the plan for Powers, um, and we worked with the community and they supported, um, an issue on the ballot, which did not raise taxes, uh, the reason we were able to do that was because half of the money came from the state, uh, the Ohio Facilities Commission. Well, when money comes from the, the state, um, they do a study, and so they are, we are, we are required to, to fulfill exactly the, the dimensions and what space we need for the moment. So even though maybe we saw an increase in preschool or in the community with new developments going in, at the time, we had to build the building that was appropriate for what was needed at the time. So we, so I know, um, members of the Facility Advisory Committee, there is a feel of like, why couldn't you maybe made Powers bigger? Because we couldn't. And, um, I, I think the community would not want us to reject fifteen million dollars from the state, free. So we developed a beautiful building that is appropriate for what we need at the time. And we do fit now. We're not overcrowded, but certainly, every room is about full right now. So, uh, that is something that we will, we will consider with our Facility Advisory Committee coming up. And that's just a good point to make of why, why didn't you make additional classrooms or additional wings? That's because we, we couldn't. We were confined by what the state was able to let us do with the dimensions of our needs and our, our student population at the time. Does that help?
Yes, ma'am.
So, um, has it been brought up with the Facilities Advisory or whatnot about a full-fledged early childhood center?
The Facilities Committee has just started their process. This information was shared with them when we met, um, had our first meeting earlier, just as far as things that we're gonna need to consider is, is the preschool. Um, and so I'm sure that is gonna be something that, as the advisory committee continues to meet and have discussions, preschool's gonna need to be part of those discussions.
Other questions?
None, okay. We'll move along. Uh, superintendent's report. I'm gonna quick, no, 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 I'm gonna keep it real quick this evening. We're having our, uh, annual retreat, our board session to all new board members to come together to put together our plan of what, what we're going to do with the JBS this coming Saturday. So next month, hopefully, we'll have some, uh, more definition as to whether there will be a levy and some of the things that you've all been asking about as we go forward. So if you have any questions specific to the JBS, it's getting to be springtime, so you know that competitions are heating up on every area, and that'll happen for the next couple of months through May, from that perspective. If you have any specific questions, I'd be glad to address them. If not, um, other updates and board committee reports? Legislative Committee, do you have anything this evening? Any questions for Legislative Committee?
So glad to be on that. That's all I had to say.
Okay, Facilities Committee update, Teresa?
Yeah, so we had about thirty, um, people that came to the first meeting, and, um, they were made up of parents, staff, council members, elected officials, um, base-based people and organization, organizations, I should say, and business owners. It was really a good meeting. And so the meeting started off with Sarah and Mike giving a history of all the buildings. One of the things I thought was really kind of interesting is, we all say AJH is a new building, and it really is not a new building. I mean, it's newer, of course, than high school in North, but it's not really, was it twenty?
Twenty years old.
Twenty years old. So I mean, when you said that the other day, I was like, what? Wow. So it was really interesting. Um, so they went over some history, and then we broke up into groups and went over a couple of questions and then came back together. But, um, it's a good group of people from all ranges, so it was a really good one. So we're going to continue and move forward, and it should be exciting.
Any questions for the Facilities Committee update?
Mark, did you have anything?
Um, no.
Okay.
So we're gonna, we're gonna, and in addition to that, we're also talking about possibly with those meetings, um, either tour our facilities here in Amherst, but also possibly do some other site visits to other school districts that have some different things that we want to look at, early childhood center, forming arts center, transu athletic complexes, transportation area. So we'll, we'll be organizing some visits and some tours as well, for the committee as well.
Okay, we had a question about the April board meeting date. It came up. Um, the April board meeting is, right now, is scheduled to be on April the twenty-fourth. And that was the meeting that we were going to do at the JBS. Um, we have one board member that cannot be here on the twenty-fourth, which is Teresa. So the question then becomes, do we want to change the date of that board meeting because we're not going, because we're going to JBS? Or do we just want to leave it as it is and move forward? JBS can't do it on the seventeenth, but that's why we moved it to the twenty-fourth initially. Why haven't checked on that yet? Because I wanted, before I started doing that, I wanted to see what the pleasure of you were.
Does it have to be a Monday?
Well, normally, your board meets meetings. It doesn't happen. We could, I'm sure we could do it another day. Yeah, I'm sure we could, yeah.
So do, will you check in to see what other dates are available?
In that week?
Not that each team, each one could.
All right, I will do that. I will have it signed that out.
If I can add something as, as the secretary for the board, I would say that what we have to have is four, which is three and five happens. So it's a decision of three.
Well, we've got a date, so if we can't move it.
Yeah, right.
If we can't, can't move it, we'll just leave it as it is.
I agree.
All right? So we just want everybody to be aware of that. She had brought that up, so I thought, let's just ask that question. Because normally, the board meeting would have been on the seventeenth. However, they couldn't do it on the seventeenth, they chose April. And I, I don't think we want to go into May just because it's much more difficult with everything that's going on in every school system at that point. So, uh, we'll, we'll get back to that from that perspective. The other item that was on here was preschool expansion. I don't think we have to do anything further about that because I think you've shared it with me. Correct? So that doesn't need to be updated anywhere else in that standpoint. Is there any other, uh, committee reports or anything that needs to come before the board this evening for an update? No. All right, then we can move on to the personnel recommendations, item eleven.
All right, we're gonna start taking some votes here in a moment. So students out there in Comets Live Land, if you're eating dinner, doing homework, watching TV, come back to the, come back to the screen. We're gonna be taking a vote after this. But first, we'll do personnel recommendations. I know the board has had a chance to look at all the personnel recommendations and send any questions or anything. And so we'll just move right through that. I, um, would like to recommend Personnel Recommendations A through M to be approved.
We have a motion in a second, please. We have a second. If there are any comments or questions on items eleven A through M. None? Call the roll.
Mrs. Gillis?
Aye.
Mrs. Wackholz?
Aye.
Dr. Messer?
Aye.
Mr. Zappa?
Aye.
Mr. Engel?
Do we have all the students come back up here, up here? So that way it'll be captured for sure. Come right up here, all of you. Come right here. Case that way. Okay? Take the backs, us and look out there. Mom, dad, teachers, grandmas, grandmothers, aunts, uncles, aunts, whoever's out there for you tonight, okay?
And this is an opportunity for, a very rare time for all of us to put our board members on the spot versus the superintendent, teachers, the principal. So let's do that. I'm gonna ask for the board to consider only Recommendation Twelve A, which is, uh, the board to consider approving April eighth, two thousand twenty-four as a calamity day, as requested by the State of Ohio Mercy Management Agency through the upcoming solar eclipse, along with our student recommendations from the fifth grade ignored. So I'd ask the board to consider that and take a vote on that day.
So, um, start that now.
And we have a motion in a second, so we have. Morgan? Discussion. Do we have some debate on this, whether or not we do it? Or should we do the thing? We didn't hear any opposing stuff. Who's the one who was opposed to it? You were opposed to it? And why were you opposed to it? Talk loudly. Just talk loud so I can hear you.
Because my counterargument was if we stayed home to watch our pets, pets, what if they get mad? Because sometimes the solar eclipse can affect how your pets behave. So if we were to stay home, our pets could hurt us or, or be out of control. So if we stayed at school to learn about it, it'd just be over by the time we get home.
Fair enough.
Any other questions or comments? All right, hearing none, please call the roll.
Mrs. Wackholz?
Aye.
Mrs. Dr. Messer, excuse me?
Aye.
Mrs. Gillis?
Aye.
Mr. Zappa?
Aye.
Mr. Engel?
Aye. Motion passes. Off on that day. Are you excited? Thanks for coming this evening. Good job. All your great job.
Come to school though, okay?
No! Thank you, thank you. Thanks for coming.
Good job. All right, I'd actually like to then, uh, take the next item on by itself because the next item, Twelve B, is revised calendar that we proposed. Be added to grading periods and do other things on the calendar. And so considering the last motion that passed, I'd like to verbally, uh, approve this calendar with the addition of April eighth as calamity day, which said if you verbally agree to that, we will impose all of that tomorrow, uh, for the community to see all.
So the calendar has been updated.
The calendar has.
But this date has not been on there, so we're just putting that on the calendar as well tonight.
Correct.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? It's still not complete, is that correct?
No, so we will probably come back in March with open house parent conferences and a very, very parent, uh, for parent committees for, for next year.
Right, but the odd days are odd days.
Yes.
So people can like, for us. Any other questions or comments? Seeing or hearing none, please call the roll.
Mrs. Gillis?
Aye.
Mr. Zappa?
Aye.
Um, Dr. Messer?
Aye.
Mrs. Wackholz?
Aye.
Mr. Engel?
Aye. Motion passes.
I'd like the board to consider, um, Educational Recommendations Twelve C through Twelve M.
Taking recommendation, please. Uh, first and a second, are there any discussions from C to M on Twelve? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mrs. Gillis?
Aye.
Mr. Zappa?
Aye.
Dr. Messer?
Aye.
Mrs. Wackholz? Mr. Engel?
Aye.
I have thirteen business recommendations?
Yes, the, I'd like the board to consider including Business Recommendations Thirteen A through Thirteen F.
We have a motion in a second. Need a second? Is there any discussion or comments on thirteen A through F?
I have one, which was simply the senior banquet being, um, the same rate as choir concerts. And then we could try to just, everyone in different kind of, pull into one calendar so that, and then also check that calendar before scheduling some things so we can avoid like double booking so that families can use it for all the classes.
Yeah, but we, yeah, we can ensure that with, including principals and coaches.
I'm sure they're in the calendar.
There is.
They're gonna be contracted, they're gonna participate.
The, um, graduation. Did I read that right? It's three?
That's correct.
We got the bump?
We got the bump.
Bump more than once though, right? I mean, we were at ten.
Last year?
Yes.
Correct. What, what, I think the, uh...
But even, but even the year before that, I mean, when we were there, because I know we missed one year. But even before that, we weren't, we were before noon, were we not? No, was it always three, five?
We were probably at two, one or two. We're at three, right?
Are we, are we the second group in there then now?
I'm not sure how many groups are ahead of us.
Dennis?
I might, I might sure if it's one or two.
Why did we get bumped so far?
Well, I guess I heard some discussion that we could be there at noon. So that's what Mike, I, I just don't understand. If ours is at three, noon and three are just not, it just seemed like there was a big gap.
Yeah, we, I mean, we could look, I could have to the high school staff look into the rationale. I don't know, maybe there are certain procedures, maybe there's some still things left over from, from pandemic that they have procedures between. that they have procedures between, managed to clean every single seat still, I'm not sure. But we can check on that, see why there's such a wide gap between the first program and the second program.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments on any of these items, A through M? If not, please call the roll.
Mrs. Gillis?
Aye.
Dr. Messer?
Aye.
Mrs. Wackholz?
Aye.
Mr. Zappa?
Aye.
Mr. Engel?
Yes, item 14. You're all wanting to move, all in here, aren't you?
Yes.
Okay, so we are going to take a motion to go into executive session this evening. One for the preparing of conducting, reviewing, negotiations, and bargaining with the board as well as the discussion of a personnel issue. I need a motion. I need a second. So any discussion or comments? I don't hear any, so please call the roll.
Mrs. Gillis?
Aye.
Mrs. Wackholz?
Aye.
Dr. Messer?
Aye.
Mr. Zappa?
Aye.
Mr. Engel?
Motion passed at 7:01. We'll go to executive session back in the first glass cubicle.